Call a meeting to order.
Yeah, you're in a flood zone.
Students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have four, three students representing us. They're all from the senior class. Jessica De Souza is a senior from Tinsborough. She's enrolled in the early childhood program. She is currently involved in senior planning committee and plans to become an elementary teacher. Also, Jonathan Bell is a senior from Lowell. He's enrolled in the CAD program and is a member of the Army National Guard. He plans to attend UMass Lowell next fall to pursue a degree in civil engineering and a minor in psychology. We also have Brianna Sanchez, who is a senior at Drakken, enrolled in the early childhood program. She's a member of the varsity swim, lacrosse, and golf teams. She plans to attend college to study neuroscience and behavior. I'd like to invite Jessica, Jonathan, and Brianna to join Chairman Moran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Congratulations, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. No call.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yeah.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Yeah. Mr. Booton, any public appearance today?
Nobody has registered to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Booton. School Committee Communications. Report of the student representative, Gabrielle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Pena, and welcome to our second meeting held on October 19th, 2017. As for the update for organizations and clubs, the dance club is going strong with 25 members staying after school every Thursday. They are busy preparing for the pep rally and are working on a variety of dances, pieces, for a medley performance, including hip-hop, breakdance, and African dance styles. The outing club is getting ready to visit Bobby Ranch in Westford, where students will have the opportunity to participate in guided trails, rides across many acres and enjoy the New England scenery. Kenny Dell Cruz, our MA Skills USA State Western Region Vice President, attended the Washington Leadership Training Institute September 23rd through September 27th. This event is the signature training event for National Skills USA and includes extensive leadership development as well as congressional visits, tours, and networking with representatives in government, National Skills USA, and other career in technical education students. Our second annual homecoming under the lights took place on Friday, October 13th. We had a great turnout at the football game, where we were announced Great Lowell's homecoming royalty. We also welcomed back the class of 2017 to pick up their yearbook and hosted a successful dance in the cafeteria after the football game. Student council also organized a field day. They were joined by Project Purple, GSA, and Dance Club. The GL Tech chapter of National Technical Honors Society has a current membership of 29 seniors. In September, 63 juniors and seniors who had GPAs of 96% or higher and had excellent attendance and conduct records here at GL Tech applied to become members. The selection committee reviewed the 63 applications and teacher feedback on these candidates and selected 44 candidates to induct into National Technical Honors Society. These new members will be inducted in a formal ceremony on Thursday evening, November 30th. School committee members are quarterly invited to attend this special ceremony. The National Technical Honors Society will be hosting the water stop in front of the school at Bay State Marathon on Sunday, October 22nd. They hope to have a great turnout. The runners really appreciate the enthusiasm and support of our students. Our annual Canoe Beach Screen Fest trip will take place on October 20th. Students will have the chance to see a movie in the cafeteria after school, eat pizza, and head out to the Canoe Beach at 5:00 p.m. On October 29th, students from Great Lowell will be volunteering to host a water station from the AMSI Foundation's Halloween Fun Run. The 5K run will take place at the Lowell Elks and begins at 10:00 a.m. with an award ceremony and party afterward. The freshmen and sophomore classes will hold their third annual committee spaghetti dinner fundraising event on Wednesday, November 16th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. All proceeds will go to fund future after-school activities. As for athletics, the inaugural Griffin Golf Team season has been a successful one. Nearly 25 golfers had enjoyed learning the game while competing at the JV level, and the team looks primed to make its varsity debut as a full member of the CAC next season. Both boys and girls soccer teams are hitting the home stretch of their respective seasons. For the girls, a very young team has shown tremendous growth throughout the season, already surpassing last year's win total with two weeks remaining. The boys' team will look to finish strong and qualify for MIAA tournament play, with big league matches remaining with Shawshank and Chelsea, as well as non-league matchups with Lawrence High School and Noel Catholic. The cross-country team is looking for a strong finishing kick as it prepares for the CAC League meet on 10/28 and the state vocational meet on 11/1. Girls volleyball has been competitive all season and looks to qualify for a MIAA tournament play in the coming weeks. The girls will be taking on league rivals Notre Dame and Mystic Valley, as well as non-league rival Lowell Catholic in the coming days. The cheer team is ready for competition, starting with the Drakken Inventational on 10/21st, before heading to the CAC League competition on 10/29. Football currently stands at 5-1 after their recent victories of Mystic Valley and Minuteman, the latter which capped over a successful homecoming week here on campus. The team heads into a showdown on Saturday, 10/21, with WinTech for the CAC Small Division Title on line. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you very much.
You gonna run?
Yes.
Oh, he's running. No, running, you're gonna run in the marathon?
Yes, Bay State Marathon.
Good luck, good luck. I'll be cheering for you.
Thank you.
Tell him what his goal is.
Um, I wanna get under 2 hours and 30 minutes.
Can you, you can't do that in a lifetime.
Who?
You.
He can, he can do it with his car. As long as we give him directions.
I can do a half marathon very easy, but I can't do a full marathon. I've run marathons all my life.
That's awesome.
Are you gonna run following into the Boston Marathon?
Um, no, I do not.
Alright.
Yeah.
Two hours and 30 minutes, George.
Everything in time.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Approval of the minutes for the September 21, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yep.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah. Uh, report of the treasurer, approval of the warrants.
Move to waive the reading, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of $3,398,609.27. Mr. Booton, Tatsias.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Uh, report of general counsel. Okay, I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start committee, I wanted to just mention, we had a incredible, productive, positive advisory evening last night with both our teaching staff and our industry leaders. We had one of the largest showings in many years last night with many people attending. We started with a general welcome. We also had our Skills USA students present to the advisory boards, and then they went back into their separate areas to vote their chairperson and set up their meeting. As you know, you'll be attending the January meeting and participating in that. Real proud of our staff for participating and all the organization that went into that. So, it was a great thing, I wanted to mention that. Item number one on our agenda is acceptance of donations. The first is a donation of two therapy rehab tubs for the athletic training room with an approximate value of $7,000. The donation is made by Dr. Gregory McNamara of Lowell. Motion to accept.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Second is a donation of six computer desks for the engineering department with a value of $3,000. A donation is made by Paragon Furniture in Arlington, Texas. Motion to accept.
Gotcha.
I have a question on that. And, you don't have to answer it, but I'm just looking. Donation is made by Paramount in Arlington, Texas. Where, where's the equipment now? It's not in Texas.
Have you read the whole thing?
Yes, I did. Did you?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Alright, good.
The, the equipment is here. It was shipped by mistake by the company, and they allowed us to keep it. That's pretty much what it was. We negotiated, there's no cost at all.
Okay, thank you.
We negotiated to keep it, it's a good, a plus for us.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Next, it's a supplement that's not in your packet. It should be accompanied on the table somewhere as a single sheet. The donation of a 2005 Dodge Caravan for the automotive technology department with a value of $2,300. The donation is being made by Darcy Coleman of Lowell. Motion to approve.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Number two on the agenda, in your packet is the Cooperative Education Report, which is something that you're used to seeing. As you can see, there's 136 seniors participating as of September 30th. Uh, this represents 27% of our class of 2007. It's on par with last year's data. The report also shows some of the different numbers and where we are in comparison, as I mentioned, in comparison to last year.
Any question?
Item number three is the ninth grade shop selection report as previously requested. It shows for the last three years, this was a requested item, to look and do a comparison. So, we produced the data that shows the last three years and pretty much, I think it's self-explanatory in some of the areas. Thank you. Item number four, Cooperative Hockey Report. I know we've been discussing this for a few months now. Please to report that the Neshoba Tech School District School Committee approved our membership and cooperative team. We anticipated this was gonna happen, this is a good move for us. Athletic Director White has worked in terms of putting things in place for informing students. I believe he's got a meeting upcoming, a meeting with parents, and putting together appropriate plans for this transition this year. I want to thank Mr. White for his hard work on this. Superintendent and the committee, I've talked to a few members, have been very welcoming in terms of doing this. I think in the future, this is gonna be a positive thing for us. So, we look forward to this project. I know last time, we had talked about what happens a year from now. We've talked about that internally in terms of where we're gonna go with that, but we're very confident that this is gonna be a positive thing that we can do for the next few years and give our students that opportunity with student athletes in hockey. Any questions, I may be able to entertain or the athletic directors here also.
Mr. Booton?
Mr. Superintendent, you alluded to the fact this is a one-year possibility. Is this a test that Neshoba is gonna have to renew us each and every year? Or would this, after this year, become more? Maybe you can explain what will happen chronologically going forward.
It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be something where, as I mentioned last time, they wanna make sure that we don't produce a, and using the word probably not a group of words, powerhouse hockey team going forward. The District A Subcommittee of the MIAA has to revote this again, has to relook at it. We don't anticipate an issue with that if we have a successful year. Not, not wins and losses, but a successful transition with things. After that, if the District A does not vote us in, then we would have to obviously go and seek out an alternate partner. What are the chances of that? Slim, probably. Could it happen? Yes, it could. Do we need to plan and have Plan A, B, and C in place? Yes, we do. And some of the other plans that we've talked about in the past, looking at some of those other relations, whether it was Minuteman Tech, whether it's Innovation Academy, whether it's looking at, maybe we have numbers at that time for us. We have hockey players here to keep our program, highly unlikely, but maybe. We would look at that at that, at that time.
So, just to follow up, would the MIAA give us a year, like we had this year, a buffer with Drakken? They wouldn't just all of a sudden say, "Sorry, we're not renewing this" before the hockey season? Does it happen at the end of the hockey season?
I don't know, I don't know that. I don't know about the buffer. I don't think they'd do that, I don't think that. I don't think it's, you've seen, we've seen that before in my experience in cooperative teams. I don't think they would do that. Mark, you have a thought on that?
I was told that was a courtesy. This year was a courtesy.
The, anytime you end a co-op agreement, if that was the question, like I think you were asking, if the co-op was to not be renewed, what happens?
No, the question was if the MIAA has to approve it again next year, when do they do that? Is it the end, the end of the hockey season, or is it three months before the start of the season?
No, unfortunately, all, all the co-ops have certain dates they have to be filed by. Typically, the, the winter ones unfortunately don't happen until early September. So, and then what they give you in that alternative then is they always offer the grandfathering. So, any kids that played the prior season always have the option to continue playing for the rest of their high school experience. You're just closing the door on any new players. You can't, you know, any incoming ninth graders, most likely. You know, or if you had a random sophomore or junior who decided to play, who hadn't played the year before, they would not have that opportunity either. I don't set the dates unfortunately for when they vote on these things. That's just set by the MIAA. So, typically that happens early, late August, early September for the winter sports, is when they vote on those at the subcommittees.
Just have one other question. Do we know how many students? We had six here last year. How many Neshoba has? And what do you need for, is it just a varsity team or varsity and JV? So, I guess there's two questions. How many students total? And then is there a varsity and a JV?
Yeah, right now, I, I anticipate we should probably come in mid, mid twenties, 25 to 27, and they're gonna try to run a JV team?
From both schools?
Correct. Neshoba typically runs, uh, we, Neshoba typically runs around 20, 21 players. We'll probably send anywhere between, I think, we sent as many as eight in the past. That's, you know, five to seven is usually the working number that we work with. We had a meeting already. We had nine kids show up for that meeting. But we always have informational meetings for a lot of our sports, and the number, the kids that show up to these informational meetings tends to be about 20% more than actually show up for the tryouts. So, if that holds true, that means out of that nine, you're probably gonna see six of them show up, seven of them, which is kind of par for the course, I guess. So, that's, that's probably what we'll have again. I anticipate sending over there this year, probably five to seven players. So, that puts us right around, and they're planning to run a JV based off those numbers. That would be enough because the JVs play on alternate days in the varsity, so you could swing a few players down from some of your third-line varsity guys to play with a JV team so they can get some extra time. That's, that's standard, that's how a lot of hockey programs run for that reason.
Very good. Thank you very much.
So, we had some players that played with Drakken from Great Lowell Tech last year. Maybe one of them is a senior this year. Will he be playing with the Drakken squad, or is he moving over to?
There was actually four returning seniors.
Thank you.
District A, after a lot of debate, was willing to make concession that they would allow those kids to play for Drakken, seniors only. It was expressly written that way in the agreement, seniors only if they chose. It could also go to Neshoba if they chose, but obviously those kids all would want to go to Drakken because it's all they knew. We started this co-op their freshman year, so they had already played three years with the program. So, they gave them that option, which is kind of not, is atypical. You don't usually see that. So, they kind of did that as a concession. They said, "Okay, we'll allow those four kids if they choose to play at Drakken." And it was written that way, no juniors, no sophomores, no seniors who didn't play last year. It has to be returning senior from last year's roster. So, that was four kids, so they're actually gonna be playing for Drakken, and then the remaining six or seven or whatever will play for, for Neshoba.
So, we have kids that are at Great Lowell that are playing on two squads now?
Well, yeah, that's the, that's the, that's what we're anticipating, yes. They had the, they were given the option based on, to be quite honest with you, the requests of the, the parents of the, of the athletes. They had made some requests, and we just, we forwarded those requests and said, "Is this something you'd be willing to accommodate?" They said, "Yes." It's not typical, like I said. I think, I think it speaks to the unusualness of the situation to have a team drop a co-op kind of out of left field. Again, a lot of sports analogies here, I apologize. Just kind of out of left field to drop the co-op. So, I think they, MIAA saw that that was kind of unusual as well, and maybe had a little compassion for those seniors and said, "You know what? You've known nothing else, you've only played, you've played there for three years already. If you want to finish, that's fine." The other kids, obviously, they'll have time to grow with Neshoba. You know, if this works out, they'll have time to grow into that program and play for them for a couple of years and have a good experience over there.
So, so what I'm hearing is over 50% of our hockey team is, if we're using the number, five to seven students playing hockey at Great Lowell Tech. Half of our, more than 50% of our hockey team will be playing in Drakken, and the other ones, less than 50%, will be playing in Neshoba. So, we're gonna pretty much have a split squad this year.
Pretty much, for this one year, that's it. One year only. It's, after today, and it's expressly written that way, and actually, all caps and bold face in the contract, "One year only, then this relationship ends." That was exactly what it said. So, that's, that's the plan. And that was at the request of some very vocal parents who wanted to give their kids the opportunity, and I didn't disagree, you know what I mean? I've said, "That's fine, you know, I understand where you're coming from." And I don't think there's any ill will by any of the classmen towards the seniors saying, "Oh, it's not fair." They all understood the way that it worked, so I think that was a concession they were willing to make. And that's a choice. They're not being forced to go to Drakken, they're choosing it. So, if they choose to play at Neshoba, they're more than welcome. It's just, that was the choice that they had asked for. They were, they were asked to be given a choice, so.
And I'm just gonna make a small recommendation here, to sort of try to motivate some students because, of course, the, the younger students would always look up to the older, the upper class. So, try to motivate them to go over to Neshoba Tech and start, you know, this new beginning process, which will be a benefit to us in the long term.
For sure.
Mr. Espinola?
Now, now, did you have a conversation with the underclassmen, and they said, "I'm okay with the seniors not playing with us, they can go off on their own," because, I mean, competition in sports is competition. And I would assume that you have people that have been playing high school sports for four years. You would want those kids playing on your team. So, so these people, I'm gonna assume, and I'll take your word for it, that these people said, "Yeah, I'm okay with that, and I'm fine with those guys playing on another team. Good for them." And, and number two is, "We're on two teams now."
Yep.
What are the costs associated at Great Lowell for being on two teams?
On the Drakken end, nothing, because they, they pretty much fund that program through a very high user fee. Their kids pay about $800 to play.
So, we pay nothing? I can't believe that.
To Drake, we don't pay anything to Drake. We haven't written, we've never paid anything to Drake for that. In the contract that we signed with Neshoba Tech, they asked for $800 to go towards officials fees, which is, is a lot less than, when you look back to four years ago, when it was just us in Tinsborough, we were paying about $4,800 to go towards the officials and ice fees. So, that's still a very small number compared to what it was in the past. And to be honest with you, hockey-wise, to have no user fees for kids and only expect $800 contribution from the district to go towards ice fees and stuff, that's very rare. To run a full-season hockey with ice fees and officials and buses and everything else, you're talking about probably 50 grand out the door.
That's why I'm pretty shocked that we're not contributing to the Drakken side of it. So, the first part of my question, did we not, did you have a conversation?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've had many conversations over the past couple of weeks with everybody. I mean, I don't know if the exact wording was, "Yes, we're happy, let them do that." I think it was more of they understood the scenario. I think they all had good relationships, you know, with each other from playing together last year, and they understood, you know, what the, you know, the situation was and those kids desire to want to stay there because it's the only, you know, the only program they had known. And we actually have a strange gap in the program, believe it or not. There wasn't a ton of juniors, so it was really a couple, three or four seniors, and then a couple of returning freshmen from last year, so now sophomores this year. So, those kids only had one year at Drakken anyways. So, they really, I don't think there was any returning juniors, maybe one. So, you know, a kid who had a couple of years under their belt. Everyone else, it was kind of a one-and-done. And those kids were probably, as freshmen, were probably sub-varsity players anyway, so probably didn't log a lot of ice time with last year's Drakken juniors. So, they didn't really have a lot of connection to them, I guess. And, you know, they kind of understood, and they just wanted an opportunity to play somewhere. I think they're pretty happy.
I just have, I have a concern with the fragility of this hockey program. And I hope that we don't end up in the situation that we're in right now. I don't, I don't know how it went about. All of the people you speak about are from Drakken, which is people that I represent. And it wasn't a, it wasn't a calm atmosphere with the whole hockey program erupting. So, I would ask of you, in the future, to be on top of this so that we don't end up in this situation again. And if we know that Neshoba, after one year, is gonna say, "We don't want you anymore," or the MIAA is gonna say, "We don't want you anymore," that we have a plan that we can hold on to this so it doesn't become a crisis. Because I didn't see any need for this to become a crisis, and it did. So, I would hope you keep that in the back of your mind moving forward.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it'll be a one-year agreement, and then they'll evaluate again, and we'll have a plan, so don't worry about that.
Thank you.
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Last thing I wanted to mention, and not on your agenda, is the state MCAS results came out yesterday. I'll have a full report to the committee at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Report of the business manager.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No. Thank you. Thank you for asking me.
So, the first thing I wanted to point out before I go into the items listed on my update is your financial package. You know when I mentioned how we had Munis updates? Before any of you ask, if you look in here, it will show that the salaries are 100% expended. We didn't go and spend all the salary money at Scamber. Yeah. I know it looks different, so I wanted to point that out to you. So, in the Munis report, if you looked at all the salary lines, it looks like we, it looks like we spent it 100%. And again, that's just that we encumbered salaries. That's the new module we have now in our accounting system. And I also wanted to point out that there are a couple of areas that show negative amounts, like we overspent accounts. They're not overspent, they're big purchase items that, They're big purchase items that were used with last year's money and they carried over and they did not hit the right purchase order the right year. So those are no concern either.
So how do we adjust that then?
It's being adjusted. It's the new accounting system. It's, we bought new modules over the summer and we implemented them. And unfortunately, because we are the, out of the 680 users, we're one of five that have the brand new systems. So we're the guinea pigs. So all the little glitches, whenever we call, they fix it. The next people that get this update, they'll have it all ironed out. But right now, we're the ones finding the glitches.
Do we get anything for that?
I wish. Because, I mean, if you think of it, the amount of time that we have to invest, if you look at our hourly rates, I mean, they should at least reimburse us for that, but no. And we, we, we don't usually like to jump that far ahead. We don't want to have the most up-to-date thing, but it happened. The technology department updated us.
So when do we get a report that we're back in the right place?
You'll, I could actually email you. First of all, the salaries being 100% spent, that's accurate. That's just encumbering your money. The only two, there's only like two or three items. And I could actually email, I mean, I could email the superintendent an updated document as soon, within the next few days after the Munis people fix it. It's something very simple. It's not something that would be long-winded. They assured.
So Mr. Giggie, you'll get that when it's outdated. And we no longer need that information.
But it will be updated.
It will be updated previously.
Any questions?
I did. So the 100% may be great for you accounting-wise because you've encumbered it, but for us as school committee members, seeing that we're three-quarters of the way through the year and we've only used something at 50% is, is better information for us. So is this a setting that you put in or is this the new system?
It's the new system, but this is exactly why. Remember when I recommended that this report here, railing this for the Department of Ed? An example is if you look at the last item on this, see how it says debt service zero spent? According to this report, you would think, oh, we didn't spend anything in debt. I happen to know we paid that on June 30th. So if we use my new report that shows a projected column, I would show that that's what's projected. The reason, this format is actually better for you as a school committee member. When you look at the 100% spent, it's showing you that we encumbered that person's full salary. If you see an available balance or a negative balance there, it points out to you where salaries have changed. So this is actually more informational. This is giving you more. Like if you look at an example of one that has a positive balance, it means someone left, we rehired someone with a smaller salary. So you start to see where we have the surpluses and the deficits.
Thanks for telling me what's better for me, but when I'm looking at this, I want to know, there may be somebody that you have a long-term sub in because they're out. That's not going to show up on this. We wouldn't know that. We wouldn't be able to ask the question, how long, you know, there's a long-term sub, there's somebody that's left, you're waiting a month or two to hire that person. So it may go one or two months, one or two cycles that we may see because in a five-week period, we'd have two school committee meetings and there may be somebody that's left and that hasn't been filled yet and we could ask about it. So as a school committee member, that would be more beneficial to me.
Okay. So you want a salary report without the encumbrances?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm assuming if you encumber, you, you put a salary in there for electrical, you're planning on spending that money.
Uh huh.
I understand accounting-wise, it's encumbered. You're, you're, but how many times, every year we've been here, there's been unencumbered. You, you planned on it, but it didn't happen. So it gives us the chance to understand there's going to be an overage in a certain area.
So what I can do is...
And then we can ask questions as to why to the superintendent.
So in order to follow what the Department of Ed, the trends with the Department of Ed and what they're doing, what I can do is I'll find the reports that continue to show you what you need, you know, like what you're accustomed to, and I'll figure out how to balance it with what they're suggesting.
Can you just add another column?
We can. I'm going to figure it out because, again, they say this is a very expensive accounting system, so they say it can do anything we ask.
This was the lowest bidder, right?
No, probably, probably, but no.
I just, I know it would be helpful to me. I'm not sure about the committee members, but it's something I look at that, okay, every single year, we know where we're going to be.
So you know what? It actually is in here, the percentage is based on the encumbered amount. I could, I'm sure that I could base it on the year-to-date actual amount, which is now showing you your percentage spent, actually spent year-to-date.
And that's, Mr. Bahu brought this up last year. I remember we were at a meeting, he picked up something that was way under. I think, you know, what's happening here? And we were able to get that information, so.
Right. Also, I'll make sure that I look to fix that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think the only thing that I want to add to that is I, I heard Ms. Turner mention that 650 different outfits use Munis, city municipalities and such like that?
Yes, and that's a number thrown out at me, so I don't know it from data, like research, but yeah.
And this is what they're going towards, encumbering everything? Is that correct?
You know, as I'm part of a, school business administrators, we have list service and we have groups like round tables. And they're, all of my fellow school business administrators are encumbering and for the reason that you start, instead of us, when we give you a projection, if we wait until the spring to figure out how much we're going to have left over in salaries, then you may not have enough time to spend it wisely, right? If we encumber the money, so 100% of my salary is shown as encumbered, it, you know that it's spent. If you get someone new in, in there $50,000 less and it shows over here in the available budget, our projections start now instead of waiting until the spring. So it's a, it's a good tool and it's a tool that they're all using. But again, like you just said, you want to know the year-to-date amount, so I'm going to find a way that both are happy.
Isn't that covered by the encumbrance though?
What, what he's asking for? Yeah, well, in reality, right now, if we wanted to look at this report, the percentages may show 100% expended and encumbered. But if he wanted what he needed right now, he could still look at the year-to-date and say, hmm, we've, we're halfway through the year and only $20,000 of the $100,000 salary has been spent. So he can still see the information, it's just not a percentage.
He wants you to do a different column.
I don't want to have to divide 20 pages, you know, in my head. I'm pretty good, but not that good to go through.
Are all these Munis, all these groups that you're meeting with, it's all Munis?
Munis?
Excuse me.
No, are all the users Munis? Many of the other school districts, some of them use budgets, but the ones that I confer with are Munis users. And Lowell was, is a Munis, you know, most of the big cities use Munis, which is this.
Lowell uses it since the, since the late 90s. Really, what do you step in zigzag?
So should I proceed or are we good with this?
I'm good.
Let's proceed.
Okay, so the, and all I wanted to point out on my update is that we have the audit going on, the audit of the financial statements, the end-of-the-year report and the A133 audit, which is the grant audit. They haven't selected the grant yet. I'll let you know as that goes. We're also in the middle of doing the end-of-the-year, on the end-of-the-year financial report, which collects all of the spending that we did. And it summarizes it like this report you have here. It tells how much we spent on instruction, athletics and all of that. So I'm working on that now. And that will get audited this fall as well. It's submitted and audited right away by the auditors. And then I wanted to give a procurement update. I put in this packet a summary of all upcoming procurements so that you see the big procurement items that we face and when we expect to go out to bid for each of those things. That way you're always aware of big things that are coming up when it comes to our procurement. And then I also put a summary of what we've gone to bid for year-to-date. And then there's another sheet that shows year-to-date quotes. I'm going to start giving you this ongoing list so that you're aware of what we sought, like what we were soliciting and who won and who were the other bidders. And with procurement update, I just wanted to let you know, we did just rebid the driver's ad and we have the lowest bidder was Lowell Auto School. And then my next update was just grants. I thought that if we, if I update you with the financials, that maybe you should know about the other $1.6 million that we have, which that's the amount we took in for this coming year. That's mostly entitlement grants. Five out of the seven are entitlement grants. I'll start giving you an update of how much, like you just said, year-to-date spent, year-to-date drawn down so that you're aware of that. And then the last thing on my list is...
I just asked a question about the grant. Is the $534,000, the Title I, was that the one that we got for, from Governor Baker and the, the, the ceremony here?
No, that's just Title I, that's...
So, so where's, where's, do we have all the grants?
This is all the grants.
Have we got it yet though? We don't know.
Yeah, you may, it may not have come in yet.
It's signed for us to have it this year. We got it last year, last fiscal year.
We awarded it, yeah, I don't know.
We're awarded. So we would have either, we would have either got the money from last year's grant this year or this year's grant this year. So there's another grant.
Are you talking about...
No, it's right. There's two grants, you're right.
So we, I mean, we were all here, I mean, all the schools came here for that grant and I'm blanking on what it was, but the governor was here giving it to us two years in a row.
That was a main, I'm sorry.
Was it the, no, Melpham was two years ago. This one was the 3D printer.
Advanced manufacturing, is it with the thing with middle sex?
3D printer.
I think that you might be talking about...
That's impressive at the time.
Thank you, thank you. The, I think the grant we were talking about was the manufacturing grant awarded by the governor last year. We hosted the, I believe we hosted the, the event. Multiple grants were announced. The governor just announced this week, it happened to be at Neshoba. Neshoba did not get a grant, but it still was announced there. We were not a recipient of the grant this year. We're allowed to apply again for February component for September. I've already instructed the grant writer to put together the proposal to go forward, to be in the fray again for a second round for that amount of money. So we did not get the grant that we applied for starting now, for, that would come in now. We did not get it.
If I could just have a follow-up of last year's grant that we were, I think it was April or May, can we, did that come in last year's budget?
Yes, but also...
It did?
But just, just a point, thank you, because that's exactly what I was looking for. But we don't treat that as a grant. It's not, it's not treated as a grant, it's treated as a revolving. The money comes in, that we were told by our auditors, we had to get instructed by the auditors on how to account for that. So that wouldn't be listed as part of our entitlement grants.
So the governor says, here's a grant for $500,000.
He said grants, but...
But we can't use it as a, okay.
Where is it? Where is it?
So where do you use it then?
It's, it's like a revolving account, but why?
Where does that income?
Like he said, it's not on the FY '18, but if you want us, if you want an update on last year's, I can get you a...
So that was in last year's and we, it was funded last year's? Okay. And then a follow-up to you, Superintendent. Is there, did they give you any feedback as to why we didn't get the grant?
No, we did not.
We got two in a row or we didn't write a good grant or?
Don't know. I, I'm going to think that probably it was to pass along some of the grant money to some other recipients. But I do think that having a strong grant proposal plays about large role and hopefully it'll be competitive going forward, you know, to get that. To answer your question about the grant, yeah, a lot of the equipment was purchased with that grant last year in the, in the manufacturing area. The machinery, it was a lot of machinery that was purchased.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Hair.
Just a point of interest for me. I was just looking at some of the memorandums and that you have in front of the business office and other places. Is it my eyes going bad or is the printing getting smaller and smaller and smaller?
You're just getting older.
Both.
I don't know. What part would you like?
It definitely is smaller.
It's, I don't know. It looks good to me.
What's the, why are we going to small print like that?
I can make it bigger if you'd like.
Thank you. It's always been, it's always been bigger than this.
Say we get them back in five lines.
We'll do something with the board or something. In the accounting software, is there an ability to show that we're down in grant funding in any column that we can kind of pick up so we can kind of track that on the committee? Where last year we got the big grant, this year it doesn't seem like it came in. Is there a way that we can flag that so we can kind of watch?
It wouldn't be in the accounting system, but that's exactly why I thought I should start sharing that type of income too, because it's important for you to see that it's not just our local budget, that might slightly go up. We also get hit sometimes when we lose that.
When we lose the grant.
Yeah, so that's why it's important. But I, it's not in our accounting system necessarily, but I could do a comparison of last year versus this year. So I could give you the spreadsheet showing, this is how much we had in FY '17, FY '18, and then you start to see each year when we lost something, when entitlement grants go up, things like that.
That might be nice to see, just so that we can kind of keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Right. You know, and the only thing I want to add is, let's not forget, you know, we did get 900, over $900,000 of grants in two years, which is really unheard of for, you know, one small school district.
And they have to spread it around.
Right, and they do spread it around. You know, a lot of the community colleges were here accepting those grants, a lot of vocational schools were here, even some of the other public high schools were here as well, receiving their grants. And at the end of the day, somehow we seem to clean up. So, you know, we ought to be thankful for what we have and as we move forward, yeah, let's get another $900,000 during your tender, tenure, please, Mr. Master Cola.
Thank you.
And then one final thing is the transfer. We have one transfer to vote on, please.
She's reading the number.
Could you say the amount, please, Ms. Turner?
275.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know it, and, yeah. It is for $2,575 and it's from program web text media to program web classroom equipment.
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
How'd she say the one? 2575?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any outstanding items you want to read in here?
We can move forward.
Any new business? Go ahead, Mr. Booton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, many times during our construction meetings, we would talk about what energy savings we'd have from the new HVAC systems, the new electrical that was going in here, the LED lights. And I think it would be important to see, even though we've expanded the school, how is that working? Also, it would help us going forward, now that we're closing the school up Saturday nights and Sundays, is that helping? And where are we budgeted? And then going forward, it's something we should keep track of to know, can we pay less for electricity, gas, or any of the other items that are on there?
Superintendent, take that under advisement.
All of it in the works. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a follow-up on what Mr. Booton is saying. I was, many times I'm in the yard, I'm just checking the vehicles that are there. Many of them are power trucks doing a running cable or something in the school. But there's more than one. There's three or four different companies that are in here doing stuff, and they've been here. They haven't been here, but they've changed names, et cetera, since they've been here. And that's been since the building has been rehabbed and rebuilt. We're still having a lot of, if you see a truck in here that's day-to-day, it must be another problem that we're having. And what is, what is that all about? Or can you help out on that one?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know for sure. Could be a maintenance issue. It could be almost any, any of our contracts that we have, our maintenance contracts that come in.
They seem to be here an awful lot, more than, more than I would think, and more than trucks were prior to all the construction we had done.
Mr. Master Coller, you could possibly ask Mr. Byrne to give us some type of an update on what's going on.
Sure, that's all.
Who's here, why they're here?
They must have it at the God Shack.
Yeah.
The company and why they're.
Well, I mean, but I don't come through Mark Byrne anyways.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
What's the roll call for?
For raise motion.
To look into the
Got a report on the utilities that we've used month-to-month over the last five years.
Okay, it seemed a little vague. I just didn't know what it was. All right.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yep.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Report on the subcommittees. I don't believe there's any report. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Booton, Curtis.
Wow, that's a record time.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatis?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?